And as for adjustments to the agenda, I will time ask the kind of discussion about it before the crowd in minutes. We can put that in the facilities, that's alright. And so I need a motion on the minutes from June 8th.
I second that.
Awesome. Anybody have any discussion, comments?
It said I was emotional in the description about me.
I was gonna say, if you're really... If you were gonna send it to work, I was gonna say it would be space based.
Everyone is not speaking. Oh, sorry. You're not speaking, if you would mute your mic. It's not, it's on low.
Turn off the mic.
Oh, and just use this mic?
Do you hear us, Nate? Mr. Ross, do you hear us now? Okay, Mr. Ross, I was just going over the minutes from last, our last meeting, and in it, you talked about needing the parking lot. Whoops, I lost you again.
No, he's on there.
Yeah, but I can't see it. So I don't know whether his, you know, I don't know what his answer is. So you talked about restriping the front parking lot. Has that been arranged? It has, there. Thank you. So, all in favor of the minutes as approved, or as opposed, or rather, say aye.
Aye.
You want to pose or abstain? Well, we've got a majority, Nate, I didn't see your vote, but hopefully we'll get you back on screen inside.
You can go through the chat.
Yeah, go through the chat, but there's also reaction, where they can actually just push a button right there. Okay. Actions that can come up or buzz.
Okay. I said, we're all gonna be just doing this, and we feel like we're resparied. So do we have any public input tonight? Everybody, hold on, we're waiting to see you again. Did you zoom his live?
He was not.
Yeah, it's okay.
You wanna try to work it out, we'll just sit, read them, like, every person.
I like my password.
I'll let you hit her.
No, so I need to hold my hand, which is not normal.
I think power the chat. Are you thinking that route?
Okay. Or he's gonna watch the chat room, Facebook somewhere, which is in there. So let us know then. So, back to public input. Is there anyone amongst the group we can see that has a need?
This is Ben. If you'd let me, I'd like to take a few minutes to just talk about some of the stuff that we talked about last.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Ben.
Sure. Well, thank you for letting me speak, I'll try, and I know you probably have a lot of things on your, on the table, but I wanted to thank you for continuing the conversation, and, you know, maybe if you didn't tune in last time, we talked about kind of anti-racism, and what, what role, you know, the school board, or the school teachers, what they would have in, in any policies or anything that might happen. So, since our last meeting, I, you know, had a lot of time to educate myself further and speak with different types of people, and hopefully some of us, some other people have too. With all due respect, though, it was very clear to me that the people in charge are not necessarily as in tune and aware of these issues as I think that they should be. You know, it's not an excuse that you don't think racism exists in Woodsville, it's not an excuse that maybe here wasn't the most diverse place in the world, but the bottom line is that, you know, it's on all of us, you know, each individually, to acknowledge its existence and hopefully use our power to dismantle it. I'm definitely a firm believer that we learn the most when we're uncomfortable, and kind of therefore forced to think critically and think on our toes. You know, for example, and maybe uncomfortably for you now that I'm constructively criticizing the school board right now about racism, but, because that is something that I have experienced in your schools' hallways, and it's something that I continue to experience today. It's not to make you feel stupid, or feel lesser, that you don't know something, but it's just my hope that hopefully my words can empower you to, you know, take action and use your positions to hopefully promote change, and hopefully lead by example for your teachers, for your faculty, but, you know, most importantly, your students. I've taken personally a lot of time to speak with my family about these issues, especially with the older family members, you know, my parents, aunts, uncles, and their parents. I'm adopted, so my family is white, that's an important aspect, aspect of the story. But, so they're all kind of, they're always to be friendly and polite, you know, but, you know, to kind of ignore racism, it's not address the problem, don't stir the pot, don't address the problems that, you know, still exist today, but I have to ask, you know, where has that gotten us? Like, yes, we passed some laws, we've had some good Supreme Court decisions in our favor, but we have still have such a long way to go, and it's so obvious to me that, you know, the big change that we, that I'm talking about, and other people are talking about, demands loud voices, it demands, demands protest, and one could argue it also demands, you know, civil unrest. And so like, business as usual has not, and will continue to not cut it. What I think, you know, the school's role in it, you know, I'm not in your position, but if I could suggest something, you know, history must be taught fully and accurately. The fact is, a lot of our history is racist, but to paint the effects of, you know, colonialism, slavery, segregation, as anything but racist, is pretty ahistorical. I remember in my history classes at Woodsville, that slavery, segregation, we're taught as thing of the past, you know, it's taught as a finite subject, without really ever addressing the effects that, that we still see today, that still affect black Americans today, and is the main reason why black people have lower access to childcare, to healthcare, education, higher rates of police brutality, longer prison sentences, et cetera. You know, we're taught that Martin Luther King, Rosa Parks, you know, were these civil angels who just protested peacefully, and the government was like, okay, well, since you asked so nicely, then we'll change, you know, like, no, that didn't happen. But people, I can tell people think that. But the, the, the point of teaching history is, you know, is important, it's important to learn about what happened, and what not to do in the future, and how not to repeat kind of the nasty things that have happened in the past, but we can't do that without a full understanding of our history. So, I'm not asking that you teach people to think like a certain way, you know, this isn't like a liberal agenda kind of thing, but you do need to teach them the full and complete history, and let them use that knowledge to, you know, form their own opinions. And I think that can only happen if teachers and faculty are adept in those issues. They also have to be adept in the social aspect of racism, because that is also a huge part of it. You know, they have to be adept in spotting racist, like, acts, language, appropriation, and just being insensitive. But, you know, it starts at the top, so you, as school board members, I think, should also be adept in this. You know, there has to be a curriculum, and there has to be an environment that prioritizes anti-racism, you know, just an anti-racism day, or like a guest speaker once a year, it's just, you know, it's really just not enough, and it's so easy to kind of brush it off, for students to skip, or do whatever. And also celebrating, you know, diversity and multiculturalism, like an international day, is great, but that's not the same thing as teaching anti-racism. So, I think Dylan hopefully may have shared with you a really great movie called Thirteenth, and hope maybe you've watched it, if not, it's free, it's on YouTube, it's on Netflix. But there are also a ton of other great resources out there, maybe, you know, a lot of stuff isn't, maybe for your generation was also not taught, so I find myself teaching a lot of things to my parents that I'm finding out. But just to kind of conclude, we, you know, we have, I think we should, we should be in this for like, the long haul, you know, these issues have persisted over hundreds of years, and I certainly don't expect to see an end to systemic racism in my lifetime, but I am committed to, you know, doing the work to phase it out as quickly as possible. But everyone has to be on board, everyone has to be able to acknowledge these things, and, you know, I hope this means something to you, not because I'm telling you it should, but hopefully because you genuinely understand the history of our country, and also want your students to be prepared to tackle, you know, the issues when they go out in the world, and leave Woodsville, or maybe they don't leave Woodsville, doesn't matter, you know. I think it'd be doing them a really great disservice by not exposing them to the issues, so, that's what I have to say, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ben. Sorry if you think we didn't take you as seriously as you would have hoped last time, but we are on it, we're going to work on it, and what I'd like you to do is come back to us in January, after we've had a semester, to kind of think about this and try to do something. We keep losing you, so, but, and maybe we can discuss it again, I mean, the last thirty days, we haven't had a chance to do anything, as you well can imagine, and, but we have made the decision, it's in our minutes, it's something that we're going to work on this, and I'd like you to hold our feet to the fire, if you'll come back in five months and do that, alright? Awesome, thank you.
And I think, I'm not sure if we were here through the whole meeting, but there was a discussion of including in the curriculum, of course, on racism, and, 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 first, Lord, and perhaps a elective, and then I think the diversity, that it should be required, but I'm not sure if you've heard that piece of it, it might go directly to your concerns and desires, so, not only we're on it, but we're already pointed in that direction, not just to have a diversity day, including in restricted things, I'm looking at, I don't know if you... Right, I brought up about doing accredited class, at least being required at, at least one year out of the four years that you're in school, like you have your English, your social studies, so this would be a mandated class that you obviously would get credit for, but something that everybody would have to take, you just couldn't just bypass it.
And, right, so, so we are doing what you want us to do.
Okay, I mean, hopefully you also want to do it too, just not me.
Oh, sure.
And I know that we tell our students, you know, not to plagiarize, but there's tons of other school districts that have done a lot of stuff, so there's always those resources to it.
Alright, well, thank you again. We'll see you, if not sooner, we'll, we'll talk to you after the first. Anybody else, public input? We'll have another shot at it at the end of the meeting, so I guess we'll continue on with our agenda number five, facilities. And, I just wanted, there, there are a couple issues with this building, I'm not sure everybody knows, so I just throw them out. We have drainage issue, where they took out the Bennett Building and paved it, created a bit of a drainage problem, of course, we had a storm, land all stormed last week. So there's a major washout over the bank, and I say major, I mean, you could put several prior. So, I asked Banwell to talk to the people who did the engineering for the grounds, they're gonna come up and look at it, see if there's something, they're gonna come and look at it, and give us an idea of what they're going through with it. And, and we still have an issue with soundproofing on the ground. And we have a warranty, I mean, we do have a warranty.
So the work they did, does it sufficiently do the soundproofing to be said?
Yeah, we actually, there weren't that many of us, but we had, I think Eric went upstairs and chairs and played a little stream, and Bert, I don't know if he played the drum, or he played something else, we could hear him both, yeah, easily, stairs, so, full band would probably be, hear more, more, but Banwell's up there. Yeah. So we'll see where that goes. And you wanted to talk about what happens? Took it from the minute, so I put it in here.
Well, I just thought we should, you know, it's certainly that important piece of the agenda for things real. But I just wanted to keep it in our minds that as clear as it goes on, we could be perhaps finding something to, 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 to,[1083.11]
And two staff members who are willing to help out. Uh, we're, we don't want to allow any standees, uh, people hanging out in the back. The crowd at three hundred and twenty is already pretty big. And I, I think for safety's sake, we, we really don't want to go any, any further than that. Uh, and we are encouraging the people who attend um to depart as soon as the ceremony is over and continue their celebrations uh at home or offsite.
So, Mr. Chase, uh, I presume we're gonna make it well-known in the public that this will be by invitation only then? Is that how we're gonna be full of size?
Yes, we'll, we'll put this out on our Facebook page. Um, basically, you can't get in without a ticket. Shirley has ordered the tickets and they should be in well in advance. We'll, we'll get them to people um in, in the mail.
So there's lots of chat in the chat box that we need to speak up. That's people having a hard time hearing and-
You just adjusted them too.
Okay. Is that better? Rachel, Kathy, can you hear us better?
Yeah. Can you hear us now? Isn't that a cellphone?
Yeah. Because the sounds from the library is almost inaudible. So, I just need someone to let us know if you can hear us better now.
Hello? I'd say no.
You heard that?
Sort of volume control on Eric is jacked up.
It's that creating causing lots of noise.
Yeah, leaving the background noises causing it to- Okay. I don't have to turn it off even without looking for the button.
That might have made a big difference.
Yeah.
Let's try that. If you want, you can all just filter through.
Can you hear me now?
Use my uh NCO voice.
How's that?
That's better, that's better, yep, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good thinking. Where were we? Our graduation, so uh it's gonna be by invitation and I think you're probably reach out to the police department and make, they might wanna bring in a couple extras, I think. Because they've never had to control the crowd before and I'm not sure we-
Well, I'm thinking more as they come in is where the issue, if you get like twenty cars that come in and then you get the whole crowd coming in, so that's, I mean, that's just kinda, you know, how we're gonna roll.
Of course, our parking lot's bigger than it was. And the crowd, the, the crowd size should be diminished. Now, we should encourage people to get here earlier, you know.
Well, I guess the best way is suggest people, the groups of six, to try to come in at the same time if that all possible. I mean, if we're sending out invitations and, I mean, should be able to get in one car and then kinda be able to roll them, no way to get them to their seats, you know. A whole group wandering through the parking lot to get to their seat.
And try to keep them from grouping or, I guess the word cohorting in this document, but, you know, separate until they get to their seat.
Eric, I had two questions, can you hear me? I can, can I just say first that, yes, the police have already been contacted? Yes, we already have a contract to have them there for uh crowd control and to assist with parking.
Awesome. Awesome, thank you. That answers all my questions, if you're gonna have somebody with the parking to have people come in. And is there gonna, is there gonna be a videographer?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Video, yeah.
And it will be broadcast on NSN as well.
Will the students be able to reset the flash drive of the, of the event? Is that part of it?
I'm sure.
You know if we can do that?
So, uh, can.
Yeah, cuz you can get their ba-, when they do basketball, you can get the video of whatever games they're doing.
Well, I made it for free for the graduates, I mean, it's like two bucks for a flashback, so.
Why did this just shut off?
I think they would just download it, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, they don't-
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's none of that, right. They download it on a CD and be like, hey, here's, here's your graduation CD.
I'm still there. Okay, so they get downloaded, Eric, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Go through a CD or whatever. Or USB.
Good. Yeah, whatever.
So, Eric, will families have assigned seating for graduation?
Yes, they will. Yeah, they will be assigned ticket numbers and specific seats.
And so will you have a map? I know in the years past, you've had uh greeters or teachers that shown parents where their seats were, so parents aren't intermingling between the rows. Will you have a map somehow of where the seats will be located?
Definitely not.
I'll send him a message.
That way, you're coming in, you go to the field to go to.
Right, send that out with the invitation, so everybody know, hey, we're on the right side of the field.
Yeah, the tickets are numbered and all the seats are numbered. It shouldn't be that difficult to find where they belong.
Well, yeah, assuming that, but it wouldn't be bad if the people at the entryway-
Well, we're going back on the greeters, so the greeters, oh, okay, you're, you're seated in section ten, so you go this side and you're on this side.
So you're not counting.
Yeah, let them know that, okay, you guys are on that side and-
And I can, I can enclose a, a map in the envelope with the tickets as to where those seats would be located.
There you go. That's, that's the hot ticket there.
Thank you.
Yeah, disregard what we said before, previous comment. Well, it sounds like you got it pretty well set. You're, are you gonna have a good day for that or guaranteed no rain?
Well, I, I certainly hope so, but I have less control of that than anything else.
So what if it is raining? Is there a rain date or is it just not happening?
At, at this point, I would say it's just not happening unless uh we can set it for like the next day and do it on the Sunday. We don't have an option to go indoors, so it's, it's basically on or off based on weather.
Well, my, my little bit of experience with weather around here is that if a, a rain date might work out because quite often we'll have a rainy day, but the next day will be okay, so.
Well, if you don't plan a rainy day, you know it's gonna rain.
Chuck makes an excellent point, if we do not plan for it, it will happen. I think that's Murphy's Law of, I forget.
So that just happened in another school, a high school in Plymouth. They were scheduled for Saturday, Saturday was stormy, everybody was ready to have their cookouts and parties. And they ended up having it on Sunday and it was beautiful day, so I think that's a good idea. You wanna go with Sunday, Eric?
Oh, that's fine, we just would need to notify the PD, the radio station, the photographers, make sure everybody gets that, that there is a rain date.
Yep.
Or, or if you haven't printed the tickets, put them around the tickets.
I think she may have sent the order in today, but I can, I can certainly check tomorrow.
Thank you.
Awesome, sounds good.
Thanks.
Reopening schools, that's gotta be easy one.
Oh, my goodness, my goodness.
We just got the pixie dust.
So, we had, uh, we had a really good meeting last Thursday evening of the advisory committee. You know, the governor's guidance came out last week, wide open, lots of flexibility to do what your community wants to do based on you know, your numbers, the community transmission, the risk of transmission. Of course, I've been waiting for any changes to happen. I mean, it's only two weeks after Fourth of July, this past Saturday. And um, I mean, the, what's happening in the country is, is alarming. And Dr. Chan was on the a, a call today with all the school nurses in the state and he said, you know, what happens in the country very likely will have an impact on us in New Hampshire at some point. So while we were planning for face-to-face, I've also asked all of the schools and the principals to be thinking about a hybrid model and what it would look like to be remote. And um, as more information comes in, I'm really leaning more towards a hybrid model because I'm concerned about the amount of time people have to stay out. If you have mild symptoms, we could have a staffing, not a staffing issue that we just can't fill our seats. Subs are really, uh, we have limited amounts of subs, we've advertised for subs and some of our best subs are in high-risk categories. So um, we're really drilling down to see what, what a hybrid would look like. What would it look like at the high school? What would it look like at the middle school? And, and we want students back in school, we wanna provide education, but we have, you know, transportation and staffing issues that really will have to be considered. So there's another meeting tomorrow, uh, tomorrow night of the advisory committee as well as Thursday at six-thirty, they'll all be on Zoom and they'll be, um, they'll be on the high school Facebook page. We're hoping to have, in the meantime, schools are meeting and planning what things look specifically, what they look like specifically at their schools. And we hope to wrap up our draft, our plans to present to you. We wrap up next week, um, then we'll have something ready for you to look at and, and vote on at the August tenth. We'll have a few more weeks of data by then as well to have a little bit better sense of what it looks like here. We want it safe for everybody and we want it to be achievable and um, we want, we wanna do it right. And with this, there's lots of challenges because it's changing on a daily basis and you know, there's, there's still so much, because virus, they don't really understand or know yet, so. Great conversation last week, the big, big, a big um point of conversation last week was about masks. We did a poll of the committee about how many we believe we should wear masks, students and staff, and a hundred percent of the committee said they believe that we should wear masks. But I've had a number of emails from people who were watching, which was great, just to say we really should, even if the decision is to continue with masks to return to school, that we should have the conversation about what are some of the other concerns? About young children being in school all day, having to wear a mask and, you know, social emotional concerns and there are lots of reasonable, you know, points, but um, you know, you have to go with the science and the, you know, the mitigation strategies are masks and hand washing and distancing, those are the things that have helped New Hampshire keep our numbers low. So, I was talking with a, an elementary teacher this, today and she said, I just can't imagine six-year-olds having to wear masks and what that learning environment looks like. And having to stay at your seat because you can't go on the rug because you have to distance and um, can't have sensors because so it just will look so different. I think looking at ways to reduce the number of kids that are in the school at a time is, is a, is a better approach than trying to bring all the kids back all at once. Um, and then having to go to remote because we have, uh, they're telling us, the local doctors and the state epidemiologists that people are gonna be out ten to fourteen days, staff, kids, um-
Not gonna be even somebody that has a regular flu or-
Right. We all have to get our food shots.
Now, just for clarification, you use the term hybrid is what you're leaning toward. Now, you're saying, when you're saying hybrid, you're meaning sometime in the classroom and sometime, and then rotating kids? Let's say, these kids go to school Tuesday, Thursday, these are going Monday, Wednesday, and just something like that? So there is some opportunity for in-classroom time and sometimes-
Some basic things, some-
Just wanna make sure that's where, does it, you know?
That's what they spell out here on page twenty-one and it goes on for a couple of pages, you know.
So, I mean, the principals are working with committees and their staff to figure out what would make sense for the age of their kids and development levels and no decisions have been made, but the model uh that the high school is looking at today was the possibility of a Monday, Tuesday cohort, a Thursday, Friday cohort. It reduces the number of kids that are on the bus, it reduces the number of kids that you're trying to separate. I mean, there are some large classes at the high school for first semester, there's twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty students that have to divide those classes and half of them down here with another adult or half across the hall. And if we start to have staffing issues, it, that will be a really, um, it would be hard to try to get them all back here all at once. And then the, this report suggests that we could use one day for deep cleaning, for office hours, for tutoring, for one-on-one, for small group, for any meetings, it'd really be a practical use of time. You know, once there's a vaccine out and everybody's feeling safe and better, we can, we can all come back and I, I look forward to that day. Just not sure it's gonna be our recommendation for that to be um, August thirty-first.
I have a lot to say, it'll take a few minutes. Number one, I read this, New Hampshire grades K through twelve back-to-school guidance. This is an F, absolutely an F, almost no guidance whatsoever, almost zero. It's a fifty-four-page report and there are four pages with a little bit of specificity, but a whole lot of general. The general gist of this document is send the kids back to school and if there's a problem, then we pivot and send everybody home. It should be exactly the reverse uh orientation. We should be opening up slowly, see how it goes, and then go from there, see what works, see what doesn't work. That's first. Second of all, I think we should be transparent with the public and tell them that we cannot keep students safe from COVID-nineteen, period. Can't happen.
Right.
The disease is too contagious and keeping the children school-aged with, with masks on all day, every day, and properly socially distanced is not possible. The only paragraph only, but I think it's important. It is not realistic to expect that it can be done every minute of every day while the children are in school. The safest option and the one we should be recommending to the community is that they stay home and, and remotely attend school. That's the safest option, that's the only safe option, and we should make that very clear. I don't want people to be, misunderstand that we're opening up a safe school, we're not. We're making an experiment with their children and their family members, period. And that should be upfront and central. We will try to keep the children as safe as possible as we are able to when they, when they attend school, but we will need their help and their parents' help and continued support to make sure that every student is as safe as we can possibly make them if they come to school. According to recent news reports, a vaccine may be available in January or February of twenty-twenty-one. But the availability of that vaccine is not gonna be available to the entire country for probably several months after that. Uh, we've got three-hundred-and-twenty-five billion people in this country and everybody's gonna be demanding. And based on past performance with PPEs, we're not gonna get it the second day that it's out. The other thing I'd like to point out, several things. This pandemic policy that we had put in place in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven is pretty prescient, I, I was very impressed with. The one line I wanna take from it to talk about today is, it says, at all times, the health, safety and welfare of the students shall be the first priority. Not opening schools, safety of the children first and foremost. I have suggested to Lori certain ideas with regard to what I think should happen, and I'll just review them carefully, just briefly. Transportation to school, I think we should eliminate bus service. I think we should require the students to get to school from their parents, period, end of story. There is no way we can keep a disease from spreading like COVID in a bus. You've got one bus driver in the front of the bus, hopefully driving and paying attention to the road, and then students in the back. There is no way those people, those children are gonna stay six feet apart in the bus. That's my first recommendation. Second recommendation is we don't open the elementary school other than remotely. There's no way you're gonna be able to keep five-year-olds, kindergarten to third grade away from each other, it's not possible. I've been talking to everybody and their sister-in-law, I have a sister-in-law who is a, a special ed teacher in, in a school in Massachusetts. They're gonna require, they're gonna require masks of second and third grade, but not kindergarten and first grade. And I said to her, does that make any sense to you? And she just laughed, it's, it's ridiculous. Let's be internally consistent, let's provide as much of a safe environment as we can for the kids. I think we should start out by having no children in school and just having the teachers here. And those students that need one-to-one attention come in on as-needed basis, that's my plan one. My plan two is that the students only come in and all the classes are taught both in the school, in the schoolroom and Zoom or Skype, whatever you wanna do. And, and at that point, we should only be having thirty-five percent of the students in the school at the same time, sorry.
Don, I just, with all due respect-
Sure.
These aren't the recommendations of the committee.
No, 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 they're not.
This is strictly your ideas.
No, these are just my ideas and I just wanna-
It'd be better if you expressed those with the committee and come to a consensus before, because what you're saying now sounds like a pronouncement or an official pronouncement.
No, it isn't.
I know it isn't, but people can mistake it.
No, no, and I'm, no, no, and you're absolutely right. I just wanted to put my position clear as a member of the school board. And I think that we should be considering these things as we go into this, into this situation of deciding what to do. So this is very much my own personal agenda, I've never talked to anybody else about it, I'm doing it in the school board context so that at least the community knows that my position is on this. And I, there are other options as well. Uh, plan three would be to have the students come to school on a rotating basis and only fifty percent of the kids in school. And I guess that gets to some of the rotational stuff that, that Lori was talking about. But I think that this document for the state of New Hampshire is a complete cop-out. We should be having thirty pages of what exactly we should do. For example, my favorite sentence in this thing was, we should have a schedule for cleaning. Duh. I mean, I, I couldn't believe my eyes when I read this. I looked through this thing, pages twenty-two through twenty-six address some of these concerns and they're all general.
Okay, good.
So I'm, I'm, I'm curious to start this thing, I'm sorry I missed that meeting last time, Lori, but I just wanted to get out to the general public that in my personal opinion, as a school board member, I think we have to be very careful and we need to open up slowly. Maybe opening up and having all the kids come to school and think that it's gonna be safe is nuts, it's crazy.
So, oh, Savannah, wasn't that you?
I had my hands up.
She did.
So I have a lot of questions and concerns as well, but I'd like to wait and see what the committee recommends. But my question is, can we move our next school board meeting up?
I think we need to.
I'm concerned that if we wait till August tenth, does that give teachers enough time to plan? Does that give families enough time to plan? If they're looking for alternative, I hate to use the word daycare, but if you have a first grader, you can't leave first grader at home. Or even if we do a hybrid model or for all home.
And I think there's a lot of people holding their breath waiting for what's gonna happen.
Like, beginning of August would be a good idea cuz the government's-
August third is on the day, uh, instead of the tenth, we can move it up to the third if we decide to.
And do you think the committee would be any recommendations by then?
I do, because I did tell them selfishly that I'm on vacation the first week in August. It's the only week of vacation I have this summer and um, you can meet, but I won't be there.
Well, can we do it before you leave and then-
But I did say to the committee, I want them to finish, we're gonna finish our recommendations um by next week. So I wanted a couple of days if they finished, so we have three more meetings, Tuesday, Thursday, and then Tuesday. And then we have, I wanted a couple of days to um, finish working on the documents and then be able to share them with you to have before your meeting while I was on vacation. And uh, if we needed one more meeting as a committee, then we would, we would meet on Thursday, the twenty-eighth.
So, oh, let me answer my question. So I was gonna throw out an alternative of the twenty, Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, just to see where that one-
Hold on a second, maybe I, maybe I got it wrong, hold on a second.
The twenty-eighth is Tuesday.
Yeah, and I agree with Sprint, the sooner we can get something else in the public that-
Parents two and a half weeks before school starts to get the last-minute plans, I think we need to do it sooner.
We need to do it before your vacation.
Yeah, if they need to quit their jobs, they need to, it's two weeks.
Right.
So you wanna, not as a target, um, Bath does a meeting on the twenty-ninth.
I mean, if we gotta make it, do it at a earlier time, I mean, you know, this is too important, this is too important of an issue for us to delay it for any reason.
What hour should you say, I'm sorry?
On Bath?
Uh, on, on-
On the thirtieth?
On the thirtieth, Thursday?
So on thirtieth, um, there was a meeting at six-thirty with the advisory committee. It's maybe, maybe it's a good idea to have a, a joint board meeting.
And listen to their pros and cons.
Well, you won't be prepared with a plan until a couple of days after.
I think we will be.
What day are you leaving for your vacation?
We don't need a full draft of plan then, do we?
August first, yes.
August first.
Saturday.
Can you maybe get the I just don't think it's fair to wait an whole nother week, what, to announce, to make an announcement.
Well, the governor's coming in this week for some more, isn't that what you said, that he was gonna release uh, the end of this week?
Well, I, I think this was, this was really it.
Oh.
He just released it earlier.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. This was the more detailed guidance after the Department of Defense released their ten recommendations. So, it may not be pretty, but I think we'll have, I think we'll have recommendations because, you know, for a hybrid, this committee isn't deciding which hybrid. We're gonna take the input from this, from this each school and what a hybrid would look like for them, that would, that would work. For example, at the elementary school, there's been no decision, I think Mr. Ross has a meeting Wednesday um, and Bob's meeting tomorrow with teachers to talk about hybrid, but for young kids, these restrictions are probably too long to last a whole day, maybe that we could do AM and PM sessions and split the classes so that they're smaller. No decision yet, just ideas we're kicking around. Pretty seriously.
Oh, I'm sorry, Don.
Also, go ahead. So, President and Secretary of Education held the fact that there may be a decrease in federal funding for schools that don't-
I'm sorry.
First schools that don't fully open, would that relate to a hybrid model at all or not, not really?
No, because a hybrid will count as, as kind of full-time school. And I don't think they can, if threatened politically, our funding, but they don't have the authority really to do that. Kind of a bold statement for me to say, but that's my understanding.
I like to believe what you said, but I like to believe what you believe. It's an odd time.
But one, one point that Don made though is the, the busing thing. If anything that has concerned me is how to figure, you know, like, busing is, I mean-
That's the key right there, cuz that's-
Yeah, I mean, that's something that, I mean, it would be-
You put twenty, thirty, forty kids in a petri dish basically in a bus.
You know, one of the things um, that this didn't do for me was that, they get off the bus, they come in, it depends on the parents to, to decide whether the kid can come to school or not. We know that's not gonna work a hundred percent of the time. They get to the front door, they can do a temperature check a hundred and one. Now, now you need to figure out what bus they came off of and they need to do it now, right now. What bus did you come off of and who did you sit next to? You can't wait until the state gets here six hours later and they'll never figure out who they were. So that's not in there, one of the things, they have kids sitting in desks in classrooms without a mask. I'm not so sure I'm a gas at that, that isn't so bad, but they can't be touching their faces because the desk they're sitting at may not be clean. I know the student, so they need to, teacher would have to monitor and make sure they keep their hands on their desks. It's okay to touch coke, I'm sure you can't get it in your face. So when they get up from the desk, first stop, hands sanitized before they go anywhere and before they put, touch their mask to put it on. And that needs to be in their pocket. Now you can touch your desk, clean your hands. I'm not saying my plan's perfect, but they certainly miss a lot of steps that I would certainly make be part of that program. I also understand the downsides when we talk about kids' welfare, the downsides of making kids stay home. I think that's very detrimental to the kids' safety. So you're talking about abuses that occur at home that don't get reported and we have no way of finding, I mean, if you wanna go through the whole gamut of things that could go wrong, Murphy would have a field day with this.
Also mentality, being able to work with, um, be with other kids at the same point, you know, that, that part of-
I've seen, I've seen some issue, you know, mental, like, the lack of sociali-, socialization issues with one of my daughters, you know, it's just, it's, it's tough, I mean, they're, they kids, they can't just be locked up in their house for the next year or whatever, you know.
I just worry about doing another remote session like we did because I, I feel that even if we did a remote, I, I feel that the kids are gonna regress no matter what, no matter how well you make the remote and the teachings, I just feel that the kids are, you know, it was new, they were into it and now they realize that, you know, they're not seeing their friends or not, I just, I just don't see it working out very well.
And they can stay and play Fortnite while they're on their remote, I mean, there's just no guarantee there.
Three kids in the school system and the one that did the best before pre-COVID is doing the worst online. And they, and it's like, Trump, I don't understand it. He just doesn't do well online and the other kids are doing fine, but they did poorly when they're, you know, and not as well.
But I think in your consideration, I know, maybe it's slightly premature, but you're gonna have a lot of students who are behind. You know, obviously they're already behind and is, how are we gonna address that? Are they gonna be, you know, will they, you know, I mean, is it the opportunity to repeat a year to go, you know? I mean, it's just gotta be or make it up somewhere, I mean, but there's gonna have to be something because they, they, they're gonna have to eventually get up to that level that where they're gonna be behind all the way. And if they're behind all the way, they're always gonna be playing catch-up and it's just, you know.
So one of, there was um, there were some reports after Hurricane Katrina out in New Orleans where some teachers felt important to go back and try to fill in all the gaps and teach previous year's content. And those kids didn't do as well as those kids that went into classrooms and they started the new content where-
Yeah.
They were expected to be- they were expected to be. And then they differentiated and provided supports to fill gaps. So I think, I think that would be, we're gonna do all kinds of benchmarking assessments when the kids come back. Um, the state's just announced that we will have to do interim state assessments in October um to give us a picture. Kids will be tested on last year's material. You know, there's definitely gonna be some work to do and um we're not gonna make everybody happy. I think we just have to make, you know, the best decision we can um with the information that we have available.
Right. Is it possible to like have the kids like, this is your desk for the whole year, this is where you're gonna be and this is yours? And this is your classroom and and, you know, whatever class, this is where you're gonna be. So I mean, I think they brought up a good point that, you know, this one kid has, you know, six class during the day. So he's touching, you know, thirty different desks, you know, can we, can we isolate them into that one desk, you know, and maybe have a teacher?
Do K to six.
Right.
But at the high school, they have courses moving all over the place. Maybe not, they're not touching.
Well, I think, I think high school students are a little more, um, you know, responsible to wear.
Yeah.
You know, you don't, we like to think they're a little more responsible, but to be able to wear the mask, wash their hands, you know, not lick their fingers and all that stuff, you know, you know. And maybe you, maybe using the armory as another school where you can actually social distance. I also thought about um the North Averell Fairgrounds. You got four huge barns where you can set up two classrooms in each barn possibly, um, you know, things like that, that we could, you know, have that one bus to pick up that classroom for that class. That's the bus for that class. They drop them off. There you go. You know, if we decide to use the busing, I mean, we're throwing out ideas here. I'm just trying to find a way so that our kids can actually get back to school and feel safe with not having anybody get very sick or anything like that. And, you know, I'm just trying to
Right.
work everything out and see all the angles if we can.
There were a couple of questions on the chat if we can, I don't wanna lose them. One said, what about Riverbend? And we are meeting with Riverbend next week on Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, talking about um working together and figuring things out and um.
There, there was a comment in here about, they didn't name Riverbend, but they talked about CTE. Tech school. We're talking about them, um, us using them and sending our students all day. They're basically saying instead of having to be there, they come back. Because they offer a lot of the other, they offer math, they offer, they offer a lot of that. So they, it's a thought.
It's a possibility. Somebody else asked, uh, could we ask the advisory council to prepare three plans? One for full reopen, one for a hybrid model and one for fully remote. And that is the plan. That is what we're doing.
Right.
Everybody knows. Um, there was a question about could another adult be on the bus taking temperatures before entering the bus? This might be having parents at bus stop. We've talked about that, Regis. You know, it just becomes, becomes a staffing, a staffing matter as well and.
We're taking temperatures is great, but the probability of catching it.
Kind of HIPAA as well if you don't have. Professional. Anyway.
So.
You go ahead, Sabrina.
In addition to Riverbend, I was wondering, could we get a list of courses that may not run? This year's more specifically about graduation requirements. I'm thinking maybe a science lab class. Maybe it can run, but maybe not science experiments. So maybe some of the lab classes, PE class.
And so we'll talk with Erica about any courses that are at risk of not running. We know that lab science, we wanna be able to make the opportunity for kids to do the labs here at school. So we looked at the classes for the year and we looked at, today we looked at the numbers of kids that are currently enrolled. And if you're face to face, we have to split up a bunch of them and that's a staffing issue and but if we do the hybrid, we'd be able to.
But I'm assuming like PE class would be maybe more challenging and music class.
Right. I haven't talked to John about PE, but I talked to Christina and she said, there's lots of creative ways to teach music. And she's, she's not worried about that at all. She's on vacation this week, so I'm taking some notes and uh somebody to type them up.
So I think there are also a lot, if you mean you're talking about PE, there's a lot of questions about athletics. Is the NHIA giving any guidance on athletics and, you know, where we, what are we?
Yeah, John's been keeping us pretty up to date. Um, each week, there's been documents that have been released. There was documents from the state on amateur athletics and, you know, they're in practices right now and it's some some good protocols in place. We're planning on having, you know, reopening sports unless you say you don't want that to happen. We did cancel, we are not gonna schedule games that are um in the southern parts of the state. And we maybe will add a couple of games for some local teams.
Oh, I'm reading.
Yeah. We just travel.
Or has there been any discussion about, I remember reading an article about Rice University basically building some tents out at least during the good weather, bigger spaces, the old classics, you can discuss them all?
I I didn't hear the beginning part.
Well, I've read an article that Rice University is building basically outdoor classrooms by a tent. Essentially, and then just spacing, obviously it would be a lot bigger on the soccer field and so forth now. And this will be a debate about whether or not we would have the soccer.
So we, right, we would want people to go outside more. That's, they say, of their safest. I have an email from a parent that's interested in organizing a group at the elementary school for outdoor classrooms and outdoor learning and and I think I've uh shared Mr. Ross's contact information and suggested she reach out to Mr. Ross. And if they have a committee, be sure that they include teachers so that um teachers have input into those kinds of ideas. Well, we had a port.
I guess my next question is if we uh, if we decide to do remote learning or semi-remote learning, is like the athletics still gonna continue even though they're not actually physically at school? Are they still gonna have to do soccer, basketball, skiing, any of that stuff?
It's a good question. It depends. You have to assess your, your community data. What's the risk in your community? What are the numbers in your community? What's the community spread and like? And if it's like it is now, then be able to, then be able to play because it's outside. I think, I think there'd be no locker room use and it does, those are the kinds of things, the details that you have to look at.
I think the biggest risk could be a sports bus. If you're, if you're gonna take a sports bus, that's the highest risk. But if you allow parent transportation or something.
That's another community, so you have to assess.
Right.
Right, but if you look at it, let's say Groveton. Groveton's got zero cases since the beginning of this and we've had a few. I mean, the risk is still pretty mild, minimum. I mean, I would feel comfortable sending my kids to Groveton to play a soccer game. I mean. That's a good. Well, basketball's a little further down the. I'd feel okay with them playing basketball, but I wouldn't feel okay with a crowd of people in there, you know, a empty gym type of thing.
It makes me so happy to see kids out practicing on the field though.
I just came from soccer practice. We just had a, you know, our club team practice and now we've fallen, you know, guidelines that are put out through the different phases. And right now, it's been assessed that we can have scrimmages and play friendly matches with other local clubs. And that's what we're doing. I mean, we're not.
Yeah.
So is there anything else we wanna send on to this committee or do you wanna wait until there are results to discuss it further? Anybody else? So Will, you meet tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night?
Three times.
Yeah, so when are we gonna, when are we gonna meet then?
So we decided on the, did you make a decision?
No, we didn't. That's why I'm asking.
That's, thank you for the twenty-nine. That's still bouncing around.
So you said the thirtieth is a Saturday and that's when Laurie's leaving, so the twenty-ninth.
No, she's leaving the first.
Which is a Saturday.
So the thirty.
So thirty, twenty-ninth and thirtieth would be available.
Um, the twenty-ninth is not, Bath has a board meeting at five.
I mean, like I said, this is too important to push it off. And if we gotta meet during the day, I'll make my schedule work.
Were we talking about listening in to Riverbend on the uh twenty-eighth? Was that something?
I don't, I think Eric and I can handle that.
Okay.
And if needed, there's a meeting on the thirtieth with the advisory committee. And we wanna suggest having a joint meeting.
What time is that?
It's at six-thirty if needed. So if after three meetings, we're not done, we have that, we have that date. But if we don't need it.
Should we set that date as the date we meet, whether they do or not?
And welcome them to join us.
And and uh the third day. And and if any or all of them want to join, well, I guess we'd have to replant it if it's all of them.
Well, we have Zoom meetings uh set up. Scott has set them all up.
All right.
But the board, board could be here if you wanted to.
So that's the. Six-thirty, we're still saying six-thirty?
Today's the thirty, six-thirty?
Yeah.
Well, that was helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Reopening. So, um, and then a not entirely unrelated topic, we have a first reading of a policy. EBCF pandemic slash epidemic emergencies. What a coincidence that came out.
Well, it's old.
Is it?
Yeah.
I I read that somewhere. It's three, four years old.
Originally, two thousand, it was new in two thousand and six.
Six.
And it was revised by the School Boards Association in two thousand and seven. I imagine our policy will have, our second meeting will have some additional information based on COVID.
I don't know that it belongs in this policy, but when I read the response, if they discover someone who's hesitant or suspected to have been exposed and so on, to isolate them. And at this school and at the middle school, the nurses' stations, I think, have windows to the outside in their little rest room rooms. And they could just put a, an appropriate fan in there and create a negative pressure room. That would be perfectly safe to come in there. Nothing, nothing can come back through, you know, close off the ventilation system for the school and make a, just like we do at the hospital, they do at the hospital. I don't think it networks as well at the elementary school because that, that's a room inside of the building. But just go to the corner of the gymnasium near those doors and and keep the kids away.
Yeah.
I mean, something, you gotta isolate.
I'd like to know more about that because I think um each school has been tasked with finding an isolation space.
Yeah.
So Bob's talking about moving the guidance counselor over to where the curriculum person used to be so that right next to the nurse's office, there's another room that could be used, closest to Nurse Laurie. Um, of course, the nurse here is all set and was still working the elementary school. I think across the hall, there's a little room from the nurse.
I wonder if there's two kids.
What's that?
What if there's two kids?
At the same time? Hopefully one of them is sent on fast.
Right.
I mean, it's, there's, there's two hundred kids in the school. I mean, it's a lot of.
Well, it's, it's a long shot. That would happen, but it could. And then you just have to identify a backup space again. Corner of the gymnasium where nobody, give them a forty-foot space around there so that they can hear. And mom come and get them at the back door. Simple solutions. I mean, we. This isn't something I haven't been exposed to for the last five months on a continuous basis. Although I'm out of it right now. In fact, I threw my back out. I can't work.
Oh, no. But you know, we, you know, you know, what's come up is people traveling in the summer outside of New England and especially parents who are dropping kids off to college. There's the, the guidance from the state, DHHS, is if you travel outside of New England, you have to quarantine for fourteen days. So um I I got some pushback on that from a couple of people and I I called the DHHS number and talked to the public health nurse and she said, no, absolutely. If you travel outside of New England, you have to quarantine for fourteen days. So I can't do anything less than that. We could do more than that. We could exceed state guidance, but we can't do less. So I had um a note today from a physician that said that Vermont and Maine have changed that policy a little bit to seven days and have a negative test. So I thought, huh, what do I do with that?
You're not in either one of those states.
We're not in either one of those states. So I don't wanna be difficult, but I can't do less than the state.
Has there been any progress on the timing, how long it takes to get a test result?
And so where you get it? If you go down to Dartmouth, it's about three hours?
My son had one Thursday and we just received it Saturday. So that was a whole week. Not Thursday to Saturday, not three days, not like Littleton Hospital.
I saw right here you started.
My son was supposed to be like four days.
And the state of New Hampshire is the same way. They're three, four. And they told us, Dartmouth told us, the MS, right in the beginning, we'll test your people as employees and they'll have a result in five hours. And they narrowed that a little bit.
Nice.
But everywhere else you're looking at, minimum two, three days, up to a week.
It was negative.
Yeah.
Hey, you're sitting with us.
Yeah, I can speed that up if possible.
Yeah, otherwise I wouldn't be, sure.
So I'll make a motion for this as a first read.
Okay, moved to accept as a first read by Sabrina. Anybody say? Anyone that, well, there's no discussion, soon there's no discussion. All in favor, I? Anyone, they or opposed and they, I'll look at you. Do you thumb up or down? All right, thank you. He thumbs up. So administrator reports, does anyone have anything, do you have anything you wanna add?
I don't have anything I wanna add. I've already talked about reopening, the hiring, we've talked about. And number three was that um correspondence. And I just wanted you to know that all of the North Country districts receive the same correspondence and they've all said no just because of the timing, the hiring and and then the exit interviews. So yeah, no, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that did look like the trying to solve a room in the dark.
Well, I had, I had a question about this. This is your report, Laurie.
Yes.
Yeah. The end of the first paragraph, it was NC Super.
The North Country. They were wonderful. They're such good sharers.
Um, so.
And then number four, scheduling now or?
So uh we'll talk about it in our public and I'm thinking we would invite for your, I was gonna say your August meeting. It just has to happen in the next couple of months.
That is in the public, I don't like to carry it through. Mister, I don't, I don't even think.
Is here, but she wasn't able to come tonight.
I don't think she had anything in hers that sounded like she had any concerns. Eric, anything you wanna add? Mister Chase, anything you wanna add to yours or?
No. Good Lord. Bluetooth speaker just went crazy. I know, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the entertainment. Mister Phillips, anything?
Well, it's hard to follow up on Eric. I would just, a couple of things. One is we've been busy with hiring and interviewing people. We have our teachers, all staff, and we have some IAs to hire. We've been meeting with the committee. One time, uh, we were anxiously awaiting the governor's recommendations. And uh tomorrow morning, we'll sit down and uh take it to the next step. And last thing just to mention is we've organized a course that uh teachers from all over the SAU will be taking part in next, um, starting Monday. It's four days on developmental designs. So uh looking forward to that and seeing people in person at some point. Thank you. That's it. If there's any questions.
But Eric, and one thing for Bob is, um, so eighth grade, they're changing, they changed the curriculum to be global studies for next year. And uh the new teacher, Felix Ackerman, um, had, has taken courses in that and is, has lots of resources that the eighth grade team is excited to address lots of issues um for global studies. And then Mister Chase's report, on the back, he talks about Jill Nichols. And we, we have to share good news, right? We wanna congratulate her. She won the New Hampshire JAG Youth Specialist of the Year at the National JAG Virtual Conference. She was recognized on a national level as an outstanding specialist. She also got the JAG five oh five award. This is a gold standard for JAG programs throughout the nation. To earn it, the local program must have at least a ninety percent graduation rate, eighty percent positive outcome rate, sixty percent job placement rate, and a sixty percent full-time job rate and an eighty percent full-time placement rate. I don't know if I got that mixed up, but uh and congratulations, Jill. Um, I saw her. She's on the committee. We congratulated her Thursday night, but I wanted to share that publicly.
Very nice.
Well done, very good.
Yes.
Very good.
Great. We always like good news. Eric. Well, thank you. Jessica, is she here? Anything? She didn't seem to have a lot of problems. Pretty rosy on your report.
I have nothing to add. Our summer remote extension programings are going as well as possible, given the constraints that we're in. And unless you have any questions, I don't have anything else.
No. Everything's going awful. Awesome. That's good news.
I didn't ask for board reports from administrators for this July meeting unless they had something to read.
Okay.
Yeah.
Save me time reading after I read this 40-page thing over here.
Right. Well, good for you.
Really fighting, needing no dose anyway. Bert, anything? You good?
Only thing I have is just to say that we've been trying to take advantage of this extra time that we've got. And I don't think the buildings have looked any better than they look now, and we're trying to gear up for the challenges ahead.
I think if we don't reopen, the building should stay pristine, shouldn't it?
Yeah, that's one way to look at it.
Good point. John says you'd be surprised. And I don't know if you heard early on, the engineer that did the site work design for this, this school project is coming back to look at the drainage issue that's run all the water down over the bank over by Rikers. That's turned out to be a massive washout and it really needs help us. So they're going to come and look at that, and my expectation is that it'll be on their dot.
Yeah, I know that this was an issue at the end of the winter this last year when the fall from the soccer field hit. And we did, we did, I did bring Primex in to look at it. And Ed Page at the time gave us an estimate on repairing that bank. But Primex declined.
It's really the engineer's problem, so I'm not concerned about Primex. The engineer has, you know, he has a duty and a, Don will help me with the word for it. But it's his responsibility to get that straightened out. And so we're going with that right now. Just wanted to let you know.
Okay, that sounds great to me.
And then Jim Marshall, sounded like he did. He's got it all under control. Is Jim around or?
I don't think he is.
Okay.
I wanted to ask a question about that. He said cable security should begin camera wiring of the HS this week. So what does that consist of?
So that's to be able to, cable, yeah, runs the lines and then Jim can install the cameras.
We got cameras now?
We have some, but this is going to improve our supervision.
So how many cameras are we getting?
Um, I'd have to defer to Jim. Ross, how many new cameras are you getting?
We'd asked for up to six new cameras to add to what we already have.
How many do we have now?
How many do we have now, Jim?
We, we have 14. But we have some dead areas that we're not, we haven't covered yet.
Okay.
So that's going to be in and around the high school campus?
All right. So I think that's got us covered. Move on to Article 10, the River Ben Program.
So I just had, I had an email from Brian Emerson, and he's been working with Eric all last year, trying to get the satellite program up here. He's applied for and received a $25,000 grant exclusively to help Woodsville begin this program. With everything going on and a change of staff and looking to implement for next year. And he is asking for the board to approve the starting of the new cybersecurity program that will be held at Woodsville High School. And then they'll be able to spend this money on developing that.
So you're looking for us to approve that. We need a motion there for?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion to approve the proposal that Mister Emerson sent along. The discussion on it. Being none, we vote all in favor. Aye. Anyone opposed or abstaining? Thank you, Nate. I've got, I've got you down now. No one to vote. Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
The design bids for the elementary school design services.
I don't know if Kathy, Kathy.
What is that for, the bathrooms or?
No, we, we, we put out a request for proposals to look at that. If you go back three or four years, there was a proposal to move those students down to North Aro. And some of the stuff that was missing in doing that was a real, a real exam what that building was going to need to continue with. So you could make a fair comparison. So that was one of the reasons we thought of this. But another way of looking at it is also if they come in with proposals to make this building able to be, remain in service for some, some period of time. And it's reasonable, we can, we can use the proposal to do that, the design services rather. So but, but that's, that's the history. We had decided way back then, we were going to, we needed to do this. Some, something so we know what that building needs. There's been all kinds of discussion about.
So that way they can come in, they decide this, the design, this, how much it's going to cost, these are your options, here you go.
Yeah. Like this bathroom thing that was going to cost us $130,000 to fix up the plumbing line.
Right. When you could take underneath or there's other options. Yeah, there's other, I don't know.
I mean, yeah, you could take it from, and probably go straight out in the parking lot. Because all those lines go out back and then run around in the connections in front of it. There may be more ways to connect.
Right.
There's a line that goes from the Tembec Building across. That perhaps outdoors, it could be cheaper than 139, but I don't know that. That's why we're hiring professionals. Come in and look at the whole situation. One of the things that I worry about that building and still is on my mind is, is the roof structure. That is a, a tech nam, I think they call it product. It's a, it's a fiberboard. It's thick. It's on top of some steel structure. It was designed for the day when you burn oil at a ridiculous rate because it was, you know, cheap. And now they're trying to be more economical, not economical with your heat. There's more of a snow loading on that roof than what it was designed for. Oh, and they insulated it too, since they put styrofoam on top. So now you've got a lot more snow loading than that roof was ever designed for. We need to have that assessed. So, you know, that's all part of the scope of the project, to make sure we've got a safe, sustainable building. So that's the purpose. That's what I was going to. So do we need it? Do we need to do anything with this design bids? We're just discussing everybody else.
So Benwell knows that they were awarded the contract and they reached out and said that they'll be scheduling us a day to come and meet with staff again and to do some current conditions drawings because there isn't anything available right now. This is just a diploma signature for new school board members. So Nate, at some point, you could stop by the SAU and sign the Justin's diploma paper. High school would appreciate that.
You get that, Nate? Okay. Thank you. All right. So are we good with nominations, resignations?
Yep.
Any, any other business anyone has to? You all set? So we're back to public input. I don't know if there's anybody that didn't get a shot at it more earlier that wants another shot at it. Here we are. It's like checking somebody's pulse.
I thought it was a table. They put it down for us.
Okay. Well, there being no other public input, next official meeting date is now July.
July 30th.
July 30th at 6:30, and it'll be a Zoom meeting.
Well, we're not going to show up.
But we're going to.
Oh, yeah, we're going to be here.
Are we going to be here?
Sure.
Yep.
No, I think it's.
That's fine. I said correctly.
We're going to have an intense, important discussion. It's probably going to be.
With the advisory committee is if we need another, like little work session to finalize some details, I'll have them meet before and then.
So we'll be at Woodsville High School again, right here. Okay.
So will they be joining us or will they be joining us via Zoom?
Via Zoom.
Via Zoom.
Sounds great. Thank you.
You know, maybe one other thing is, have we talked to our insurance company about what, you know, how they feel about stuff?
I think they answer questions if you're more specific.
No, I mean, like Don said, I mean, I agree. We are not going to guarantee the safety of anyone. If we're sued, you know, is Primex prepared to, you know?
I think we have good standing if we follow, as a minimum, standards that have been proposed by the guy that's really going to get sued.
Well, you send a paper out saying, you know, you're sending your kids to school.
There's no bad news in here. It's all general. It's, or as, as Lori said, they've given us a great deal of flexibility. This is worthless as a guideline for somebody to say you, you know, you've informed with it or not. There's nothing in here.
It's given the local communities the flexibility to do what's best for their, they feel is best for their community.
Which is ridiculous.
If you live in Nashville.
Well, I think what he's saying is I think it's better to have the districts do their own because we shouldn't be in lockdown like, you know, the town of Portsmouth or the schools down south where.
Which I think a lot of southern schools are doing a hybrid model, is my understanding.
Right.
I think I was just talking to someone from Bedford and they're doing a two-day on, two-day off. I'm pretty sure it was, but you know.
Like John said, in Groton, they're probably going back to school because they haven't had any cases for a while or any at all, you know? So that might be something different for them, for their district.
What I'm saying, Chuck, I understand what you're saying. What I'm saying, the governor's office has access to a tremendous amount of expertise. And it wouldn't be, it would be very easy for them to say, there are schools down south. We've got Division One, Division Two, Division Three, we've got elementary school, we've got middle schools, we've got high schools. Why didn't they give us 12 sets of options? How hard would that have been? This is completely nonspecific. It's just general. And basically, they've cut out to the school districts.
Well, I think he's trying to let everybody work together rather than just him making decision for everybody. I think he wants the school board members, the people in the town to all kind of.
I think his, where his back's against the wall. I'm not sympathizing or making less of it, but a policy for the entire state's impossible. Except to say they're just closed. Everything's closed, it's going to stay closed for the next five years. Because we don't know, we do not have any reason to believe there's going to be a vaccine next year or the year after. So we have to agree. We don't, we don't have to accept that we, we don't have to like the fact that there's risk in living. There's risk in everything we do. We have to minimize it to an acceptable level. So, and, and what's acceptable to me and your are clearly different. I can tolerate. But in thinking about what I know about kids, their susceptibility, their ability to transmit is considerably less than what I see in my older patients. Like me. So there's a lot of things you have to take into consideration. And I'll go back to what I said earlier about the harm we do to these kids even in isolation. I truly see a less problem.
I respectfully disagree with somebody at Crevisis. Number one, I have not heard that the transmissibility rate for children is less than any other. I've heard that we don't know. And if we don't know, we have to assume the worst. That's my opinion. In terms of comparison between people dying and children having difficulty because they haven't been able to interact as much socially as they would like for six months. I think that concern is far, far less than worrying about whether somebody's mother or father or grandmother or grandparent.
I'll try to, I'll try to send you the studies on transmissibility.
I'd be happy to do that. But my point is that, your point was that the governor can't cover all this thing. And my point is, he's in a much better position to cover multiple possibilities and then we take it from there. He's putting all of our communities in a position of trying to decide and figure this out for people who don't have the expertise and don't have the.
I do see it. No, I got that. And it could be, it could have been approached from a different perspective.
But I think in a lot of the greatest challenges, you have a lot of, you have people who don't want their kids to come back to school, period, for safety reasons. And then you have people who want their kids to come back to school as everything's normal. And there's a lot of, you know, and our job is to find a happy middle ground that meets the needs of, because I mean, we as people are able to make choices. And I mean, and have some risk. And like Dick said, I mean, the, you know, risk of living. What is the risk of living? What's the risk of driving? What's the risk of eating an unhealthy diet? I mean, there's a lot of risks in life. And I mean, the risk of having a proper education or a good education, I mean, at some risk is part of life. It's part of living. These are times that are difficult in some ways, but these are also times that are, we're learning a lot of other things. I'm completely in favor of my children being in school to some regard. I mean, doesn't, you know, whether it's a hybrid model or, or something, but I'm not in favor of them being isolated for another six months or year. It's unhealthy. I've seen it, from what I've seen, it's unhealthy for them. It's, and I wouldn't support that. Not, you know?
So to answer your question, Primex had made a statement earlier in the year that there was no liability following protocols. There is a webinar that all school board members were invited to, but I will attend for you if you'd like. You're welcome to join me at 10 o'clock on July 23rd.
I know you do.
And there was something else that developed recently I wanted you to just be aware of, and that's the virtual Velax has now entered into the K to three curriculum area. So.
It's a new name, right?
Was that?
Was it a different name?
No, it's going to be K to 12 Velax.
Okay.
So they had the high school model pretty well done and the middle school. And last year, they worked on grades four and five. And what the state has agreed to is if somebody feels really strongly, let's say we come back in a hybrid model and there's somebody that still is not comfortable with that, and they want to have a remote option. And that would be Velax, but they would stay enrolled in our school and they could participate full-time in Velax. And they could, you know, if they were senior, they would still graduate. They would still participate in senior activities. You would still be considered a student in the school. You're not a homeschooler. You have it drawn. And that's just for this year. So I'm interested to see, curious, my first grade teacher hat. You know, what does first grade reading look like in Velax? And as Scott knows, we talked earlier, you know, Velax bought all of their content from the Florida Virtual School. So I'm pretty sure, you know, they'll look very similar to what they have in Florida for that. What, what we won't be able to do is, let's say we came back full-time and a teacher is teaching full-time during the day. She can't then, he or she can't then be expected to go home and teach remotely to a bunch of kids and get the same. That just, it just can't happen. And it's different because we are going to say, no matter what model, we want all K to 12 teachers to have their Google Classroom. And they can be loading assignments on there so that if a student has to quarantine, they will have access to some of the materials. And in that case, I think it would be fair to ask a teacher, if you have a child homesick who's doing work, that they may be able to touch base with them and help, help out some. So we're still working on, on that. A couple of key points.
So what about if we gave them the option of, let's just say, we plan on doing school like normal, kids come back. But we give the option to those parents that don't want to have their kid in school. So that teacher that's teaching that class, can she be on Zoom so that kid can participate? That doesn't want to go to class, can he participate while she's doing a live class? You know, via Zoom or however they do that, to be a part of that.
I think, you know, in Healdville, that would have to be somewhat negotiated.
It's basically set a camera up and the kid can interact and have a computer set there and she can just.
That has all kinds of liability because then anybody at home can see. That has all kinds of liability because then anybody at home can see other kids and I think we have a policy that says we can't put recording devices in classrooms.
We have to have a release.
Unless we had everybody sign, all the kids, all the, you know, and the, and the teacher. So I think it's, it's possible. I, I don't know that it's.
Wouldn't it be more possible if you have?
But don't we have twenty cameras at the elementary school you just had?
Only for security, but they don't go out. And I mean, we had a point where you couldn't take pictures of kids and put them in the yearbook without their release or, and it had a lot of ramifications, three, four years ago, whatever it was.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Well, yeah, lots, lots of issues and good times.
What, what could they, could the Zoom meeting only focus on the teacher instead of students? In other words, the computer is here, the teacher's here and the other students are.
Right, that's what I mean, I don't mean like, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, there's, one of our, one of our, one of our village schools likes that idea and they've purchased these special cameras, they're not very expensive, Jim's already installed them on the viewboards and the principal's buying Bluetooth lapel mics because somebody may tolerate bad video, but they're not gonna tolerate bad audio, right Eric? And.
Oh, he's not listening?
You know, but what you can do in a small school sometimes is different than what you can do in a big school, so not everybody has the viewboards, is, is, they're still waiting to have some viewboards installed, I think here at the high school and elementary.
Just trying to come up with ideas to keep things at a minimum.
I know.
We're not gonna please everybody, there's gotta be somebody that's gonna be upset no matter what.
Well, along those lines, and now she's mentioned viewboards, I did go in at the request, some teachers, two teachers had issues with them here. And we went in and looked at them with Jim and his wife and the teacher. And one of the concerns was the image was too small, when we measured it on this, it was exactly the same as the image on the Promethean board. The Promethean board itself was bigger, but the image was smaller, it was a projected image had this much marginal around it. And it was way, way dimmer, you could hardly, hardly make out the Promethean board, you know, it's just a projected light image, very poor. And I think the real issue that brought her to ask us to look into it had more to do with the operational aspects of it and they've been resolved. So I, I know I brought that up once and I did, I did come in and meet with them all and at the end of the day, they're all happy and I said, well.
There you go.
Putting you on the spot, has there been any, any research on, I get it that kids are at home and they're doing, they're doing their homework and maybe they're not paying attention or video games they wanna do and said, is there any research or capability of making the kids pay attention and actually do the work along with the rest of them and notify the teacher if they, they go astray? For example, I was in a classroom years ago, I was monitoring students and the one kid left the room to go to the bathroom and another kid grabbed the coffee off of her desk and started drinking it and the kitchen was right on that kid and said, just put that coffee down. So is there any way that, is there any modeling for doing that to keep kids paying attention? I mean, whether they're looking long or whatever, is there any research on that?
I'd have to look into that, Don. Not on my radar right now, but.
I mean, if I was a kid and I didn't really have to pay attention, I might have a good attention.
Now, teachers have worked really hard to be engaging and, you know, they're not just doing lectures, they've got videos and conversations and lessons and activities and it's a good, it's a good question though.
So we're actually talking about going into non-public. Yeah, so I need.
Make a motion, we're going non-public for a, for a personal reason.
I'll second.
And I need everybody to just put their hand up to confirm they're good with that. I don't know how we do this with you Nate.
Yeah.
Zero F.
Everybody will, will click off except Nate.
Well, everybody except Nate, thank you for coming and attending tonight and.
Is there a way to guarantee there's no recording though? That could be viewed at another point in time.